We are live.
All right, I call this Committee of Whole Planning Administration a meeting to order. May everybody please rise for the reading of the implication. As we come together today, we recognize the great responsibilities laid upon us. Our council will always strive to understand the needs of the people we serve and to use power wisely and well. Our purpose is to establish and maintain a city of prosperity where righteousness, where freedom prevails and where justice rules. We acknowledge the rich history of this land, which includes the Anishinaabe and the Hotoshoni peoples. Today, there are many First Nations, Maitis, and Inuits people who live or work in the city. The intent of this acknowledgement is to recognize our responsibility to use and take care of these lands responsibly and respectfully while remembering the generations past and considering the generations yet to come. We respect and seek to continue and promote the longstanding relationship with the area's First Nations, the Six Nations of the Grand First Nation, the Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation, and the indigenous peoples who reside within the city of Branford. Let us also not forget those who served our community and who are no longer with us, so we may continue to do their work in their memory. Please be seated. Clerk, has the roll been taken?
Roll call has been taken.
Thank you. Members of the committee, are there any declarations of communicatory interest on items appearing on today's agenda? Not seeing any. Members of the committee, are there any items for consideration or consent you would like to separate for discussion purposes? Please note that the following items will automatically be separated as we have delegations. Item 8.2, financial support for Lansdowne Children's Center new build. Item 7.1.3, Grayfield CIP Tax Incentment Grant Application for 395 Park Road North. Item 7.1.4, Primary Care Access Pilot Program. Counselor Samuel?
7.1.2, please.
Counselor Hunt?
7.1.7.
Counselor Martin?
7.1.6. Yeah, and the others are separated. Thank you.
Counselor Carpenter?
7.1.1.
Not seeing any other. Counselor Martin, can you please move the motion to approve all items of consideration consent, 7.1 and 7.2? And state your seconder?
Certainly, I move second by Counselor McCurry that all items for consideration consent, items 7.1 and 7.2, separated for discussion. Oh, sorry, that's the wrong one. Sorry, I move second by Counselor McCurry that all items for consideration not separated for discussion purposes be approved.
Clerk, can you please read the titles of the items subject to the vote?
Thank you. The items subject to the vote are item 7.1.5, 2026 Candidate Education Session; item 7.2.1, The Minutes from Cow P.A. of October 14th; item 7.2.2, The Downtown Branford Priority Plan. Thank you. And all items not separated carried on a recorded vote of 10 to zero. All those voting in favor are Mayor Davis, Counselor Sullivan Caputo/Martin McCurry, Carpenter, Hunt, Samuel, and Tilburg.
Thank you. There are no statutory public hearings, but we do have three delegations. But before hearing the delegations, I would like to remind those in the meeting today that the following rules of decorum, as set forth by the city's procedure bylaw, apply. No person shall display any sign, banner, or placard in the meeting room other than materials that, in the opinion of the Chair, are legitimate audio-visual aids necessary in connection with any presentation made to be to council. All persons present shall use polite and respectful language and shall refrain from the use of any language or the making of any gesture that is found to be disrespectful or offensive. All persons addressing council shall speak only on the subject of debate and shall not speak on any other subject. No person shall applaud participants in the debate or engage in any conversation or behavior that may disrupt the proceedings of this meeting. So I now ask Rita Marie Hadley to come forward, and Scott Lyons, as he'll be speaking to item 8.2. Please state your name for the record, and you have 10 minutes inclusive of questions.
Scott Lyons.
Rita Marie Hadley. It is our delight to be able to appear before you. Thank you for the opportunity. As Executive Director of Lansdowne Children's Center, I am grateful to be joined by others in the room who represent families of Lansdowne or are governors. And Scott is a longtime supporter after having chaired our board over a decade ago. To prioritize the time for questions that you may have of us, we're going to skim back, skim over our backstories and focus on the progress since our last time before you. So as a quick recap, Lansdowne turned 50 last year, but we've grown since 1998 at our current location. Our headquarters at 39 Mount Pleasant Street are steep in local history. And since growing from that site, we have moved from serving under 1,000 kids a year and housing 57 staff. I also appeared before you in 2010 as we were looking for parking space and had the bylaw changed. So progressive councils have seen our growth, and the most vulnerable kids in our community have been fortunate to have been served by this community and by governors as well as the municipality supporting us as we grow. We are proud to be one of 21 children's treatment centers that cover the province, so that families don't need to leave their community for care. So you see our services on this slide. They fall into the categories of rehabilitation, respite, and recreation. And among the reasons that kids may need Lansdowne include neuromuscular issues such as cerebral palsy or spina bifida, neurodevelopmental, that could be autism spectrum disorder, fetal alcohol spectrum disorder, genetic issues such as spinal muscular atrophy, Down syndrome, fragile X or Williams syndrome, congenital changes that need therapy and rehabilitation in addition to acute medical supports. And so the whole range from physical to communication to development means that with early intervention or with ongoing supports that we can see kids reach their potential, whether they arrive early through prematurity or have a diagnosis or injury during lifetime. Our mandate is to make sure that kids are being all that they can be. Among those that we support as well are those who are medically fragile and they depend upon technology. They might need our out-of-home overnight respite care at our Kids' Country Inn. Just to give you a little bit of the numbers involved with us, one in five Branford kids need Lansdowne. So on average, the population nationally, which sees that percentage, is borne out in our local statistics. They may not be using the services at all points during their life, and if they've been successful at early intervention, they may not need continuing supports. 60% of our staff work here in Branford, and we have a workforce of 256 personnel. And during the time that we have been growing and serving the community, our growth has actually, quite frankly, dwarfed the city's growth. So when we add both the population growth in the city but also some of the changes that mean kids need our services, that has added to why there are more kids waiting and being served. As an example, when children who are born prematurely, we have incredible technology that allows us with great caregivers to be able to support lives. Babies as small as 500 grams who can be successfully supported needing the care. So after kids are in the hospital, they return to the community, and we support them with their ongoing needs. Many of our kids started at the Hospital for Sick Kids or at McMaster Children's Hospital. So it's our role to continue them here. Our 13 different programs under one roof in another community might operate a separate agency. So we have the value proposition of operating as a hub and bringing that together for family convenience. We note that this is also in line with the city's new Empowering Youth Strategy, particularly around access to services and safety and inclusion. I also note that the troubling issues that the city tackles and continues to face around opioid addiction also has its manifestation in kids, babies born addicted who will require supports from Lansdowne around some of the early developmental implications. So we are with you in that journey. Our numbers that we have served demonstrate that growth, as I was mentioning. When you put together the number of kids that we serve, almost 4,000, and almost 3,000 who are waiting, that figure of 6,688 Lansdowne kids on the list, if you equate that to, what does that look like? That would be the enrollment of 19 local elementary schools. So we're talking about a significant force to be contended with in terms of the volume, while we make sure that we're not institutional and kids are living their everyday lives attending those schools. But we need the essential space to fit everyone in. The increase, I note, is significant, and I think that you probably want to get some context from what does this mean economically? So consulting firm Deloitte, in their September 2025 report on the economic case for investing in child health, they show the multiplier effect of a dollar invested in pediatric health care yields up to $17 in economic returns. That's by reducing the health complications, caregiver burden, and lifelong illness impacts with early intervention. So the ability for us to be effective in supporting kids earlier also means that when kids are served and their families are located in this community, we have them buying houses, we have the jobs that they occupy, and we also have the ability to have the potential for future taxpayers who receive timely services and can go on to what their potential will contribute. I also note with having W. Ross McDonald School locally, that does give us a higher percentage of kids who need the services related to some visual impairments. And it's not rare that families do relocate to Brant to make use of the ability for that service. So addressing all of this growth, we came to you in 2017 and grateful that you responded to our requirements for more space. You granted us an MOU for a building site on Mohawk Lake District, even extending it as provincial delays overtook circumstances that would no longer see that site available to us.
And so many of you were in the room almost two years ago now when Michael Pars, the Minister of Children, Community, and Social Services, came to visit Lansdowne and made the commitment that the ministry would commit to a new Lansdowne to recognize all of this growth and really set a new direction for what we will do as a children's treatment center in Branford. At that time, we were able to easily slide our beginning planning from the Mohawk Lake District potential site over to a new site. And I'm going to show you a couple of renderings very quickly, but we're looking at a new site, a new build that is about four times the size of the existing Lansdowne Children's Center, three stories, more green space for outdoor recreational space, a therapy pool, more parking, large rooms for group therapy, and other initiatives that are going to start to help work that waiting list down. So you see there, we're looking at about 100,000 square foot built. And this summer, we announced the purchase of the property right next door to Lansdowne. Again, many of you were at that announcement, and we thank you very much for your support there. So these are very early renderings of the building at the corner of Colburn Street West and Welsh from the front and from the rear where the parking area is. And so our timeline, as you know, we closed, so we closed on this building this summer after months and months, actually more than that, years of due diligence. Our zoning application is now in front of staff and will be coming up early in the new year. So we hope for site plan approval in the new year. We'll be coming back to you likely at that time and to start construction in 2027, is our hope. And so we're here tonight to ask for financial contribution to this. As you know, provincial builds like this usually require about a 10% commitment from the local community. This is going to be around $100 million build plus, and we're asking the city at this time for a multi-year pledge of about 400,000 a year, over five years, for a total of about $2 million. I think that's my time, so I will stop there. Thank you for your consideration.
Counselor Hunt, you got a vote a minute.
Rita Marie and Scott, thank you for coming. I know that you are well aware that Lansdowne holds a very dear place in my heart. I have a 31-year-old niece who was born with a very rare genetic condition, medically fragile, and spent her first 18 years with Lansdowne. I just looked at the numbers that you gave for the current population you serve, and it appears that your waitlist is almost the same size as the number of children that you're allowed to serve. So this new build is going to make sure that we don't have children in our community, and I think it was approximately 3,000 of them that are on a waitlist for services that are so critical for them. Is that a fair assumption?
Yes, that is correct in terms of the high number of those kids who are waiting. Yes.
Great, okay. And thank you again. Thank you both for what you do.
And that's our time on that. We'll be dealing with this shortly. Thank you. I would now ask Michael Krasik and Paul Kemper of Colerita Development to come forward to speak to item 7.1.3, the Grayfield CIP Tax Incentment Grant Application for 395 Park Road North. Please state your name for the record, and you'll have 10 minutes inclusive of questions.
I'm just here for answering any questions, and Michael Krasik's doing the presentation remotely.
Michael, on your screen, can you accept the prompt asking you to turn your microphone and camera on?
Yes, certainly. May I begin?
You may.
Okay, excellent. Good evening, Mayor Davis, members of council, and city staff. My name is Michael Krasik, Vice President of Development at Colteria Development. And I'd like to begin by expressing our sincere appreciation to the planning and economic development teams for both their professionalism, cooperation, and guidance throughout this process. In particular, I wanted to acknowledge Joe Muto, Tara Tran, and the broader planning and building departments. Their responsiveness, collaboration, and balanced approach have been instrumental in us advancing this project overall. Purpose-built rental housing is uniquely challenging in today's environment, and it does require a coordinated effort from all parties. And we're very grateful for the partnership that we've experienced with city staff. We could turn past this first slide. That'd be great. And this is just a little context of the project for those that aren't aware. It's located on Park Road North. It backs onto Wayne Gretzky Parkway. North of us, we have a six-story apartment-style retirement home facility. And to the south of us, we have bungalow townhouses. And if you go to the next slide, I can give you some more context. Great. So with respect to this application, the purpose of this program is to enable the development of a mixed-use, multi-residential building that will deliver 163 new rental units to the city of Branford. Without this grant program, the project would not be able to proceed. Multi-residential rental faces quite difficult financing conditions with the first five years, five to seven years, being particularly challenging from a cash flow perspective. A program such as this allows us to weather that cash flow deficiency and associated risk, given the project's stability it needs to move forward confidently into construction. This support is essential in making the development viable. We fully intend for this development to become one of the nicest rental communities in the city, a high-quality, well-amenitized building that'll be attractive to young families, working professionals, and empty nesters alike. And we are prepared and ready to move forward with this project. In fact, we've already obtained our foundation permit and have initiated some initial site activities. And we've already submitted for our full building permit application. Substantial construction is scheduled to commence upon the council's review and consideration of this program. Could we go to the next slide, please? Thank you. And just a little bit of context about the project. It's a six-story, high-quality, multi-residential building. It'll feature 163 rental units and a ground floor commercial space. It does have one level of underground parking, nine accessible parking spaces, eight EV parking spaces with capacity for future expansion, ample bicycle parking, and over 8,000 square feet of resident amenities space that we're very proud of, a fitness facility, a resident lounge that's going to enable them to have the opportunity to socialize and connect on a greater level with those that live within the building, an outdoor barbecue and social area, children's play area as well, and private balconies for all the units. Our objective is to create a modern, durable, and community-oriented building that supports long-term housing stability in Branford. Perhaps we can move past to the next slide. And just in closing, this program by the city enables the kind of high-quality, purpose-built rental housing that aligns directly with the city's housing objectives. We remain fully committed to delivering a development that Branford can be proud of and being a long-term partner in this community. We just wanted to thank you as well for your time and consideration today. And should you have any questions, Paul Kemper, the President of Colteria, is physically present there at the meeting and can answer any questions you may have. So thank you once again.
Thank you. First up, Counselor Carpenter.
Paul, nice to see you again. This is 163 units, all rental units? And how long have you had the property?
We've owned the property for about five years now.
What five years? And what stall? What was the cost of building? Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so we own, we've owned the property since about 2019. We proceeded and achieved all the zoning requirements, the site plan approval, and building permits to move forward. And we were going, our intention was to move forward at the end of 2021, but then the market changed on us, and the financial, the numbers didn't work anymore. And so we've been watching, looking for the opportunity to move it forward. And with the TIG program, we ran all of the numbers, and this is, allows us to move forward at this point with the project.
I remember when you first called me about this not being able to move forward with any other options, and I referred you to the planning and economic department of housing. Were they helpful? Was that change that you turned the corner?
Absolutely, yeah. Tara and Joe Muto were very helpful, explained all of the options available to us and the city's support.
And Paul, these 163 units, they're going to be owned by you. You're not, you're not going to build these and then flip them. You're going to own them for a long time?
No, we'll continue on. We keep the buildings that we've built.
So the maintenance of the building and the quality of the building and how it's maintained is sort of on your reputation?
Very important to us, to make sure that it's a quality building.
Thanks.
Like Michael said, this will, in our opinion, will be the nicest building in Branford.
Thanks for having faith in our community.
Thank you.
Counselor Hunt?
Paul, thank you for coming, and Michael, thank you for your presentation. You did indicate that financially, you would not be able to move forward with building this apartment building without the tax incentive grant. Is that correct?
Correct. It is the program that allowed us to consider moving forward.
Okay, and again, welcome to Branford and to Ward 4. I think I told you this. I can see the construction from my back deck of this property, so it's certainly nice to see something going on. The other question, mixed use. You're going to have one commercial unit, but my understanding is that it's strictly for the tenants of the building so that they have access to a commercial amenities space within the building. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you, Paul.
Counselor Sless?
Thank you, and welcome. What's your projected rent for a two-bedroom apartment?
I'm going to go back, but I think it's around $2,300 or $2,400 for a two-bedroom apartment.
That's a two-bedroom?
Yeah.
Okay, and a one-bedroom?
Just under $2,000, around $1,950, I think.
Okay, and that's the going rate, is it, within the city?
That's the market rate, yes.
That's market?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is there anything in the agreement that ensures that they will remain rental units?
We build a lot of condominiums as well, and we would have to register it as a condominium, and that is not what we're doing. We're going through the process and registering it as a apartment building, as a rental apartment building. There's a separate registration that you have to do for a condominium. We're not pursuing that avenue.
Okay, and it was indicated you'll have eight parking spaces for electric vehicles. That might not be enough in a few years. Do you have plans to expand that, and you're going to rough in electrical for more spots?
Yeah, I think our starting rough-in is 45 spaces, if I'm not, don't hold me to that, but we'll put in a lot more, like we'll put the conduit in so we can support a lot more in the future.
Wonderful, thank you.
Not seeing anyone else? You can take a seat, and we'll be dealing with this shortly.
Thanks.
I would now ask Linda Kohler and Danielle Major to come forward to speak to item 7.1.4, Primary Care Access Pilot Program. Please state your name for the record, and you'll have 10 minutes inclusive of questions.
Linda Kohler.
And I'm Danielle Major.
Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak to you, Mayor Davis and members of council. We would like to talk about our support for the primary care access program. As I mentioned, I'm Linda Kohler. I'm the Executive Director at Grand River Community Health Center, and I'm here with Dr. Danielle Major, a local physician, and she is also the Chair of our Primary Care Network for the Brantford-Brant-Norfolk Ontario Health Team. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Brantford-Brant-Norfolk Ontario Health Team. Unfortunately, our director is away this evening and cannot be here for this presentation. Grand River Community Health Center is one of 19 community organizations that make up the Brantford-Brant-Norfolk Ontario Health Team. We refer to it as the OHT. The OHT brings together local health and social service providers, organizations, hospitals, community support providers, mental health agencies, and primary care practices in our region to build a more connected, effective, and efficient local healthcare system. They play a key role in planning health services in our community. And Grand River Community Health Center plays an important role in supporting our OHT. Our OHT is not an incorporated body. Therefore, they need a support agency to act as a transfer payment agency as well as an employer of OHT staff, and we play this role. As you can see, we're very invested in the OHT, but also in our community and in primary care. Across Brantford-Brant-Norfolk, more than 20,000 people currently do not have a family doctor or a family provider such as a nurse practitioner. And over 10,000 of those people live right here in Brantford. This is one of the most pressing health challenges we face in our community. People who do not have a primary care provider often go without regular checkups, preventative care, and may delay seeking help when they are sick and frequently have no choice but to visit emergency departments for issues that could otherwise be managed in a family practice setting. At the same time, the context is changing here in Brantford. Fewer medical students are choosing family medicine. About one in three local family doctors are age 60 or older and nearing retirement, which could result in another approximate 20,000 people in Brantford without a family provider if they retire without a replacement. Of course, this is concerning to us, and it's something that we would like to take some action on and be preventative in looking at this in our community. Additionally, we're competing with other communities that are offering incentives to attract new providers. Recently, the province of Ontario has made primary care a top priority. With new historic investments in interprofessional primary care teams, these teams bring together doctors, nurse practitioners, social workers, pharmacists, and other health professionals to provide comprehensive, coordinated care, the kind of environment new graduates are trained in and seeking to work. to provide comprehensive, coordinated care, the kind of environment new graduates are trained in and seeking to work within. Here in Brantford, the BBN OHT and Grand River Community Health Centre have been provincial leaders in operationalizing two rounds of interprofessional primary care team funding. We've built a foundation that's ready for improving access to care. And many of you have heard through news and other media, Jane Philpott's model of having a health home and having every Ontarian connected to a family provider. And that is what we're aiming for here in Brantford as well. The OHT is now applying for the next round of interprofessional primary care team funding, with Brantford being a key focus of this funding. We do appreciate the letters of support the Mayor Davis has provided, both to our OHT and our Indigenous-led health organization. This really supports our proposal. In this next round, the funds we've applied for will increase the number of Brantford residents attached to a family doctor or nurse practitioner while also strengthening the supports available to existing providers through expanded teams. So these expanded teams are other health professionals that can support primary care physicians in doing things like diabetic education and other supports like counselling and mental health support. The provincial funding for expansion does not provide the necessary recruitment support or capital costs, and essentially provides funds for salaries and operational expenses. At this time, the provincial expansion and recruitment challenges will be foremost on our minds. I believe our success will be in building a local recruitment role in partnership with the city of Brantford and the Chamber of Commerce. This would enable us to build a recruitment strategy in this very highly competitive market to achieve success as we grow our community care capacity here in Brantford. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Dr. Danielle Major to share her responses.
Thank you, Linda, and thank you again to the council for your leadership and partnership on this issue. So I'm here on behalf of the Brantford-Brant-Norfolk Primary Care Network as the current chair. I am a family physician who's been practicing comprehensive primary care in Brantford for the past ten years. I was first exposed to working in Brantford through clinical placements during my medical training. But it was the personal connection with the Brantford physician recruiter at the time that she made with me that, when I completed my training, that enticed me to come and work in Brantford. Having her support as far as touring potential practice locations, meeting clinicians in the community, and managing the practicalities of entering a new practice was particularly important as a new graduate. From the perspective of our local primary care community, this alignment couldn't come at a better time. Many of our colleagues are approaching retirement, and those who remain in practice are feeling significant strain. Recruiting new family physicians and primary care nurse practitioners is critical. But just as important is ensuring that those already here have the supports they need to sustain their practices. That's why the city's proposed four hundred and fifty thousand dollar investment over two years is so valuable. It would help us attract new family physicians and primary care nurse practitioners and retain existing ones. Additionally, it would help us to align local resources with the ongoing provincial primary care team expansion and the coordinated work led by the Brantford-Brant-Norfolk-Ontario Health Team and Grand River Community Health Centre. As the Physician Recruitment Committee wraps up in December, this is the ideal moment to bring all local efforts under one shared framework, the Primary Care Action Plan. This plan has three objectives. The first, advocacy, continuing to champion Brantford's needs and priorities at the provincial level. For example, council's recent letter of support to the province in our IPCT funding is a prime example of a successful advocacy. The second, recruitment and retention, attracting new family physicians and nurse practitioners while supporting those who are already here. Having dedicated funds to support family physicians and nurse practitioners to relocate and to attend conferences provides a competitive incentive to clinicians. Posting jobs nationally and internationally and having the city launch targeted marketing campaign in partnership with Chamber would be a powerful tool to facilitate successful recruitment. And the third, connecting clinicians to clinical space, helping new recruits establish practices quickly in available facilities, developing a centralized database of both available clinical space and clinicians in need space would be a valuable tool. Some of the exciting projects and developments include creating shared clinical spaces that make it easier for new clinicians to get started and integrating team-based supports that help them deliver comprehensive care from day one. These initiatives will make Brantford a more attractive and sustainable place to practice, ensuring that residents can access care when and where they need it. Together with the city, the Brantford-Brant-Norfolk-Ontario Health Team, and local clinicians working hand in hand, we have a clear and achievable path to strengthen primary care for the long term. Thank you again for your partnership and for your continued advocacy. It's truly making a difference.
Thank you. And have a code of questions. Councillor Caputo, you got about sixty seconds.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick question. It's probably alarming that twenty-eight percent of our family doctors are age sixty. What's the metric for basically from GTA to Windsor? How do we fare in terms of what that age group looks like and towards population? Are we ahead of the curve? Are we behind the curve? I know it's a difficult question, but I'm just wondering, how do that positions us? How many more doctors do we need in the rest of those communities around us?
I don't have recent data on that, but could get back to you on that. I don't really know, to be honest.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. We'll be dealing with this item shortly. Now, moving on to Considerate Consent Item, councillor Caputo, could you please take the chair?
Absolutely. So councillor Sullivan, can you state your secondary or move your resolution for eight point two?
Absolutely. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Samwell. Financial support for Lansdowne Children's Centre, new build. Whereas Lansdowne Children's Centre is one of Ontario's key children's treatment centers, providing essential services and support to almost four thousand infants and children, youth, and their families annually. And whereas Lansdowne's Children's Centre supports children with a range of physical communication and development challenges due to conditions like autism, cerebral palsy, spina bifida, chromosome disorders, and neurological conditions. And whereas Lansdowne Children's Centre has been a vital part of the community since its inception in nineteen fifty-two. And whereas the current twenty-five thousand square foot facility located at thirty-nine Mount Pleasant Street is operating beyond its capacity. And where Lansdowne Children's Centre has acquired lands at one sixty-eight Coburn Street West to construct a new approximately one hundred thousand square foot facility to meet the growing demand for child and youth services. And whereas Lansdowne Children's Centre is preparing to submit the necessary zoning bylaw amendment and site plan applications in October of two thousand twenty-five to support their proposed development, which is expected to begin construction in two thousand twenty-seven. And whereas Lansdowne Children's Centre has identified that a contribution of approximately two million dollars from the city of Brantford is critical to the success of this redevelopment project. Now, therefore, be it resolved that staff be directed to provide a report to the Estimates Committee on December first, two thousand twenty-five, outlining options to fund a municipal contribution to the Lansdowne Children's Centre redevelopment project. And speaking to this, I have firsthand seen the work that Lansdowne does. I've seen the events through the hero's walk and roll. I've seen the positive impact it's making on the children's lives that I've seen in the facility. I toured Lansdowne more than once with Rita Marie, and the smiling faces I see in there and the opportunity that is granted to the children that are in that facility is second to none, and you will get my full support on this.
Okay, councillor Samwell.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. When councillor Sullivan asked me if I would second this tonight, I was really honored to. I think that I couldn't be happier to support this tonight and support Lansdowne so that they can continue to focus on the incredible work they do for our community. Thank you.
Councillor Slass.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll certainly be supporting this initiative. I too have been at the site several times and seen the great work that goes on there, and it's hard work. I feel for those that work there because they deal with adversity every day, and it can't be easy going into work knowing the challenges you're going to face that day. So I'll certainly be wholeheartedly supporting the two million dollars over five years. But I have a couple of questions. What's the catch? Oh, there's nobody to ask the questions to. So I won't ask the questions. I'll just leave it that I'm supporting the initiative, and I'm sure it will be unanimous, and I would presume it would be. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councillor Hunt.
Thank you. And through you, I just wanted to say I too will be fully supporting. I believe that, just in the questions that I asked the delegate, there are almost as many children on the waiting list as that are currently being served in the current facility, and the fact that those families are living every day without services of Lansdowne that they do so vitally need. I know that my family could not have survived the raising of my niece for eighteen years that she was involved in Lansdowne. And for that, it's quite emotional for me. She was medically fragile and required so many of the various services that they offer. So my full support. I also want to point out that a hundred million dollar build and the fact that they're only asking us for two million dollars is really a, I think, a testament to the success that their capital campaign will have in our community. So thank you again.
Councillor Carpenter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think councillor Sullivan was going to talk about the catchment area. But it is a large catchment area. And the minister came here. He was, he was very impressed when he made the first initial funding announcement at Lansdowne. It was a very nice day for everybody. It was very wonderful that the provincial government was going to ride funding for the new build. Finally, we're going to get the new build going. And he was incredibly impressed, not just with the work that Lansdowne does, but the catchment area for the children that it serves is huge. So Lansdowne is recognized all around, all around us, for miles around us, as a catchment area goes, as one of the best facilities in the province, the services that it provides. There are others that provide similar services, but Lansdowne provides the full scope of services, has the respect of the province and a lot of people in it. So I know loads have talked about the program and the success stories that they've witnessed. There's many, many stories that you can talk about, the successes of Lansdowne. The Local Rotary Club is also a sponsor of the Lansdowne. For many years, actually, was the original starter of Lansdowne, was the local Rotarians way back in the day. So this is a success story of Brantford-Brant County and the surrounding area of all of us to get behind the support. So while we've asked for two million, I know that the campaign will be fantastic. You've got a great campaign chair with a lot of experience. And I'm sure you'll be successful. At the same time, we might be doing a hospital campaign at the same time. So we'll get on with this one as soon as we can and get the site plan approved, get the building structure going. Mr. Kemper's here, so I just sort of let you know that Lansdowne is just in front of you. Always pitching for some extra funds. So thank you for everyone, I will be supporting this hardly. Happy to be part of the team in any way that you need us for the fundraising. Thank you.
Councillor McCurry.
Councillor Caputo, thank you very much for your diligent work so far this evening. And welcome to our presenters tonight. You know, it's all well and fine to look at the numbers before us, the statistics and the ROI and all that. But when you're one of the one in five, it means a lot more. And our family has become one of the one in five, and so we've seen firsthand what an incredible difference a short period of time by professional folks can make in a child's development. So of course, I'm fully supportive of this today. And I bet if you did a tour of the community, you wouldn't find more than three or four people out of one hundred and five thousand here that would be opposed to this. And we know how we would deal with them. So of course, I'm supported tonight, and I'm sure you're going to hear that eleven times. And then you'll hear it again at the end of the month when you come back again at council. You'll hear it eleven more times. How can you say no? We've done this for, we did it for the hospice, I believe. We did it for BGH. And of course, we're going to do it for Lansdowne because we believe in our community partners that provide support to our kids, our adults, provide support to this community with respect to their healthcare. Thank you.
Well, I'm going to chime in now. Oh, Mayor Davison.
Yeah, don't forget I'm sitting over here. Thanks, Mr.
You want to have your hand up? Sorry.
Yeah, so yeah, the need for this is indisputable, and I think we've known for several decades what the need is. But more importantly than that, from my perspective, what I look at is what has this organization has done for so many families that with their children are facing some really difficult, challenging situations. And what this organization does to support those children, their families, with the goal to making, helping those children and their families reach their fullest potential, whatever that might be. And that is a cause that is absolutely worthy and deserving of all of our support. And if I look back on this, it's been a pretty twisting road to get us here. We have potentially Mohawk Greenwich location. Previous council agreed to donate lands for that, and of course, there were some issues involving that with the survivor secretary. And now it's great that with, it's kind of, it's almost fitting that it's the neighboring property to your current facility where the solution is going to lie. And I think we can all be proud that we'll have a role in this. And it is a very large catchment area extending right down to Haldman Norfolk. And I'm sure we won't be the only municipal organization contributing and supporting this. And then also, if you look at the fact that, surprisingly enough, this organization will pay development charges on the application, the building permit, and these monies will go a long ways towards offsetting that. So as mayor, I'm extremely pleased to be able to support this and glad, I'm very confident that this is the path that will lead this organization to a building that's worthy, not only the staff, but also the children, the families that you serve. So it's great news. And thank you, councillor Sullivan, for bringing this forward.
Councillor Van Tilburg.
You know, I don't know how Lansdowne's felt about the wait and the journey to get here. But to me, it feels like I've been waiting eight years to cast this vote. Where I thought I was going to cast it, where I thought I was going to land, and what the help that was coming, I thought it was going to be in our own backyard, and we'd help out. But things happen for a reason, and I got to tell you, I'm even more impressed with where it's landed because it will always feel the same. It will almost seem like Lansdowne is just still right there where it is and where people expect to see it. You know, Lansdowne's been helping the children forever and a day, and I think of the eight years that's passed, that's in a child's lifespan, that's a significant period of time. You know, so with you and the children as you go, the city of Brantford goes with you.
Now not seeing anybody else, I will chime in. I've been there a few times. I've met with Rita Marie. I haven't seen a facility that's busting at the seams as much as this one has. I think the work that's being done there is absolutely phenomenal. It's showing, and I couldn't be more happier than to support this. But it'd be short, not to be able to say that a facility is as good as its people and its leadership. And when you have the leadership and the team that does what they do at Lansdowne, the success, not only for this current facility, but the new one is going to be astronomical, well-needed. And congratulations, I'm glad to support this tonight. So not seeing anything else? Call the vote.
Okay, item eight point two carried unanimously on a recorded vote of ten to zero. All those voting in favor are Mayor Davis, councillor Sullivan, Caputo, Slass, Martin, McCurry, Carpenter, Hunt, Samwell, and Van Tilburg.
I will pass the chair back to councillor Sullivan now. Thank you, councillor Caputo. You did a fine job. Councillor McCurry, please read the motion to place all separated items for consideration consent not previously voted on on the floor and state your secondary.
Secondary is councillor Martin, and so moved.
All right, we'll start with item seven point one point three. As there was a delegation, is there any discussion? Councillor Carpenter.
The only thing I would like to keep councillor members apprised of is that the project wouldn't have moved forward if it wasn't for this grant.
the project wouldn't have moved forward if it wasn't for this grant. And I think there's a lot of projects that we've approved in our community that are again stalled because of the cost of building and the cost of what they can sell for. And we might want to look around and find out what else we can do as a city to move these projects forward so we can get more built in the community. This is an example of city staff working with the developer to be able to move a project forward. I want to thank staff for their work on this.
Counselor Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to staff, is there anything in the agreement that mandates that these units remain rentals?
Through the chair to Counselor Martin, Cartran Economic Development, our agreement does not require and hold the applicant to keeping the units rental for the term of the program. The emphasis is the fact that housing has been created, whether it's rental or ownership tenure. So no, there is no requirement to stay rental.
Yeah, in the report, it made it sound as though because it was rental, that was one of the reasons why it was approved. If that's the case, is that something we need to look at with this program to mandate that it remain rental for the period of the program?
Noted. Grayfields, the premise for Grayfields is to help these derelict properties that were former commercial sites to be redeveloped and revitalized, knowing that housing helps add vibrancy to the commercial space. But yes, there could be an opportunity to focus housing on rental, you know, sticking the objective being to create rental specific housing.
Yeah, I'd appreciate if staff take a look at that and report back. Thank you.
Mayor Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a great example of what we had hoped. The previous council brought forward this grant program, tax increment grant program. And it's another example of the fact that this program is working. It's a very powerful incentive inducement to builders and landowners to construct rental housing. And that was the objective when we passed this. It was that it would encourage rental construction on Grayfield properties because we're recognized, this was six years ago, that development simply was not occurring. This is one of several recent applications that we've seen. The last one, I think, was the development on West Street Hill that you see being constructed. And there is built into this policy an incentive for affordable, in particular CMHC affordable housing. And that is if you include that in your development, you're not required to, but if you do, you'll qualify for an exemption on development charges. And actually, the tax increment grant program is even more generous if you included affordable housing in your project. So it is something that the previous council considered and spent a lot of time developing and it's great to see that it's working. Thank you.
Not seeing anyone else, I'll chime in. Obviously Branford has had a very big concern on rental housing stock and adding 163 extra units into this stock, I think, is a no brainer. So you'll end up with my support. With that, we can call the vote?
Thank you. Item 7.1.3 carried unanimously on a recorded vote of 10 to 0. All those voting in favor are Mayor Davis, Counselor Sullivan, Caputo, Sless, Martin McCurry, Carpenter, Hunt, Samuel and Van Tilburg.
We'll now move on to 7.1.4. Counselor Carpenter, I understand you have a conflict here?
Yes, after reading the report and looking closer, I see that it's the Branford, Brant, Norfolk Health Team. I'm a member of the Branford, Brant, Norfolk Health Team, so am I a role of John, Oklahoma, so I'm going to declare a conflict just to be transparent.
Thank you. Any discussion? Not seeing any, we'll call the vote?
Thank you. Item 7.1.4 carried unanimously on a recorded vote of 9 to 0. All those voting in favor are Mayor Davis, Counselors Sullivan, Caputo, Sless, Martin McCurry, Hunt, Samuel and Van Tilburg.
All right, we'll now take up the remaining separated items as they appear on the agenda. 7.1.1, Counselor Carpenter, you asked for this to be separated?
Yes, thank you. This is a review of the code of conduct and in camera meeting processes. And the thing I think that's missing in this whole report is that when we go on camera for a particular item, let's say for example, it's purchase real estate and we purchased the real estate, when the deal closes, there's nothing that allows the public to be aware of what went on in camera when it's no longer needed to protect the municipality. Not a legal issue. For example, buying the railroad tracks that we didn't buy, how did that go? If that was an in camera item, what was the outcome of that and how was it voted? I don't believe in cameras should ever be used to cover how a counselor votes, how counsel votes should be transparent and public, but the rules to go on camera should be there just to protect municipality, legal issues, employees and so forth. But after those, the need to be in camera no longer exists. I'd like to see a process for those items become open session for a general public and be transparent. Thank you.
Counselor Samuel?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. Really, the only comment that I wanted to make about this report was that I appreciated the fact that it was mentioned in here that there is going to be a process after a closed session is held to bring the matter to committee of the whole and give a bit of an update so that there is some additional transparency. So I was pleased to see that.
Not seeing anyone else, we'll call the vote on that item.
Thank you. Item 7.1.1 carried unanimously, oh, sorry, carried 9 to 1. All those voting in favor are Mayor Davis, Counselor Sullivan, Caputo, Sless, Martin McCurry, Hunt, Samuel and Van Tilburg. Those opposed, Counselor Carpenter?
Thank you. We'll now move on to the next item, 7.1.2. Counselor Samuel?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to highlight a few things from this report. So earlier this year, when council was discussing the year end surplus, I brought forward an amendment asking staff to explore a vandalism prevention and restoration program. This came directly from what I've been hearing from our local businesses, the frustration, the costs and the ongoing impacts they face when vandalism occurs. Vandalism doesn't just damage property. It affects people's sense of safety and it disrupts day to day operations and creates unexpected expenses that are especially difficult for small businesses, nonprofits and faith based organizations. These impacts ripple, are a ripple through our community and affecting confidence and how people feel moving through their neighborhoods. That's why I pushed for this program and why I'm encouraged by the approach that we have here. It helps with repair costs, it supports preventative upgrades and I'm especially excited to see the safety audit component. This gives applicants practical onsite advice to strengthen their buildings and reduce the chance of repeated damage. It's a supportive tool that meets people where they are. It's also important that this program is citywide. Businesses and organizations in every part of Branford are experiencing these challenges and this approach affects that reality. I appreciate that the pilot is grounded in local data and informed by what other communities have done successfully. It will give us a strong starting point while keeping a focus on accessibility and the real impact on those who are most affected. While this pilot focuses on businesses and organizations, I hope we can explore residential stream in the future. Many residents experience vandalism as well and this work can help us guide those options. I want to thank staff for the hard work on this report and I look forward to the next steps of the public consultation and the CIP amendments that will allow us to move forward with this pilot in 2026. This is another step forward to a safer, stronger neighborhoods across Branford and I am proud to have initiated this work. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Davis?
Yeah, I agree with Counselor Samuel. This is a great program for two reasons. One, I like the fact that a majority of the funding will be oriented towards preventative measures so that the applicant would come forward, there would be a business type property, they have to be a victim of vandalism. And so one, there's, you know, small contribution the city will make towards the cost of correcting and the act of vandalism, the impact on their property, which is important because that's a sign that we emphasize with businesses that are going through this and I kind of want to share the pain and have some, provide them with some assistance. But what I particularly like about this is that the significant portion of any funds that are granted would be in regards to preventative measures. The property owner in their proposal, including a provision upgrade, whatever it might be, that will actually work towards reducing the vulnerability of their property, their building to vandalism. And that way, it will be, it'll go a long ways towards making our community safer in the sense that it is preventative in nature, not just restorative. So it's a great program and look forward to seeing what the results will be over the next year or two with this pilot program.
Thank you. Counselor Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be fully supportive of doing this. It would have been nice to have had this program in place when I owned income property because we did have graffiti issues with the property that we owned. And it's unfortunate that the landowner, the homeowner or the business owner gets victimized twice because they have to, they get victimized by the graffiti in the first place and then they get stuck with the bill cleaning it up. And if they don't clean it up, we go after them and make them clean it up. So it's something that is very unfortunate for the victims of graffiti or damage that's done by vandals and I think this program will go a long way to helping alleviate some of the costs, at least for the victims of this crime. Thank you.
Chiming in. Further to what Counselor Martin was saying, a lot of these businesses then also turn to their insurance to have things taken care of. Now their rates are going to go up, which is going to cause their products and services to go up, which is going to come back to the consumer. So I think this is a good way of making sure that we keep things status quo in these times of uncertainty right now. Not seeing anyone else, we'll call the vote?
And item 7.1.2 carried unanimously on a recorded vote of 10 to 0. All those voting in favor are Mayor Davis, Counselor Sullivan, Caputo, Sless, Martin McCurry, Carpenter, Hunt, Samuel and Van Tilburg.
All right, moving on, 7.1.6, Counselor Martin?
Thank you. Just a question through to staff. Would it make sense to consider switching some of the food programs at shelters and places like that to a vegetarian menu? There's a solid report a while ago that said that the vegetarian menu reduces costs and it also reduces the cost of refrigeration and freezing for storing materials that are susceptible to spoilage.
Good evening. Through the chair, Mary Musson, Commissioner of Community Services and Social Development. The shelters, they're actually providing food for their shelter residents. So it wouldn't make sense to transition those programs over. So within the report, there is the example of Rosewood House. So they offer their food program to the residents who are in the shelter themselves. The Salvation Army Branford Booth Center has actually stopped their lunchtime program of brown bagging lunches. So they no longer distribute to citizens in the community, it's just for their shelter residents.
Okay, because when I was on the board of Rosewood, I brought the issue up there and they said that they were mandated by the city to follow the Canada Food Guide. So if we remove that requirement, they could switch to a vegetarian meal.
So through the chair, they would have to provide the appropriate food and nutrition to their residents. So I don't think we could remove the Canada Food Guide recommendations.
No, that's the point. If they don't have to follow the Canada Food Guide, then they can do a vegetarian menu that is nutritious and covers all the bases.
Through the chair, it's all personal preference and need for citizens who are residents of the shelters. So we wouldn't be able to mandate that a very specific menu be followed.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Counselor Carpenter?
It's a great workplace, staff. I wonder if you could provide members of council with a copy of what is a calendar? There's a calendar that has food locations almost every day of the week. I think it is every day of the week, but if you could provide that to members of council so that when they're looking for meeting up with people that need services, we could direct them accordingly.
Through the chair, certainly we can do that.
Thank you very much.
Counselor McCurry?
Chair, thank you. I will echo Counselor Carpenter's comments. It's work well done by municipal staff. I do want to point out though, we have 7.1.2 tonight, 7.1.4, 7.1.6, 8.2, 8.4 and 9.1, all of which are not part of this municipality's core service provision. These are all items that should be provided by other levels of government, which through no fault of our residents, end up on our laps, our municipal taxpayers. And I just think that folks in the community should be aware of the additional strains put on us and not provided by federal and provincial governments. And we, you know, we heard earlier about, I think it was $100 million Lansdowne's budget is for the building. And we all love Premier Ford and we all love MPP Willie and we all love the Ontario government, but it seems to me they just spent $75 million on an advertising campaign to the benefit of media outlets in America that would have funded three quarters of our Lansdowne bill. Thank you.
Mayor Davis, I believe you have an amendment?
Indeed, I do. So this amendment is in relation to section 9.4 of our report, which talks about next steps. And the next steps, as contemplated by the action plan, is the city staff exploring opportunities to align food funding and programs that are provided in a more coordinated fashion. And I'd like to add to that further, an amendment that will further expand what it is staff will be considering and reporting back to us early in 2026. So my amendment, if I may, I believe Counselor Van Tilburg is going to second it. So the amendment is that staff invest, this is part of the next step. The staff investigate and report back by quarter one, 2026 on the feasibility of bylaw and any other appropriate measures that regulate the use of public spaces for the distribution of food, clothing and other donations. Encourage partnerships between private individuals, organizations and established agencies to ensure coordinated and sustainable support. Prioritize the safety of staff, volunteers and recipients. Protect recipients from hazards, including inclement weather conditions and traffic. Provide a clear pathway to connect recipients to appropriate community services and organizations for long-term support and solutions. And the reason for this, Mr. Chair, is that, you know, prior to COVID, a lot, there was a fair degree of coordination amongst the various services that were being provided in the downtown and outside and in the near downtown. And then during COVID, COVID disrupted it. A lot of the programs then became, instead of inward, like taking place inside a building, they became really outward and occurring on the street. And there was, there were reasons for that in terms of making sure the program that you're operating was in compliance with COVID regulations. The problem is what we lost in that was a certain compassion because if you have programs and services that are being provided on the street during the cold and the winter, it's not very compassionate to be doing, say, food programs or food delivery on the street when it's minus 10. And also the other thing that it missed out on that was done effectively before COVID is when you have programs that are coordinated and many of them taking place inside a building, it gives you the ability to do a lot of really good outreach to connect with those people. So what I'm seeing in this amendment and that staff have worked with me is that the end result is hopefully we can arrive at a better coordination in terms of the various services that are being provided. And as I said, a better coordination between public and private organizations that are providing- organizations that are providing this, and seeing that the monies that we allocate towards the various good works being done are done in a better, in a better communicated way, in a way that is, I think, just more compassionate, delivers the services better, more efficiently, and more effectively for the individuals that are being helped. So we'll see what comes out of this. It may be that staff tell us that what we have now is fine, doesn't need improvement. But I suspect, given what I see each day, not just in the downtown, but other parts of the city, I feel confident that we can improve the way in which we help those that most need help. Thank you.
Any discussion on the amendments? Counselor Van Tilburg?
Yeah, and just to follow up with the Mayor said, you know, at this time of year, this is when we have to be thinking about all the entities out there that are trying to do good works for the community. We always, we always think about these things that, when it's around Christmas time, and we tend to forget about them afterwards. But yeah, COVID did disrupt a lot of things. And I think one of the, one of the biggest things that I've noticed that becomes missing is that you lose your sense of community. A lot of times when you're going inside and you're sitting in the table, in all the row chairs, and, and, you know, you're moving around, you're talking, and it, it, it's just, it's your sense of community, and you're, you know, you're having your, your lunch, and, you know, there can be socks and stuff at the place. And a lot of things happen. And the other part is that since COVID as well, I mean, I think we're very used to seeing entities come and go over time. And new people jump in. And the truth is, there's, there's so many new. And I gotta tell you, I've done, I, we just attended some private ones that were out in the open street. And I mean, some really good stuff. It's really nice to see. It's nice to see the enthusiasm. But it would also be nice to see them coordinate and know who's doing this, who's doing that, you know, to bring it all together. So essentially, that's what this resolution is doing. And again, you know, I myself have noticed that change, that it seems to have taken longer for a lot of entities to drop that COVID mentality that we had, you know. And, and, I mean, again, when other people are private sectors distributing food, and I know Lonnie's does it all the time. But again, there's no sit-down there. The people go right out the door, you know. So we've got to find something where we can care for people, you know. And again, especially at this time of year, you know, give them a nice place to sit down, warm, a warm, a warm area, and a place where they can chat and talk. So, thank you very much.
Counsel Samuel?
Yeah, I was just gonna add to that, too. I actually agree that there's been a lot of shifts since COVID. And I don't think a lot of people realize that when you attend a community meal program throughout the city, and it's, you know, that you go in and you have the meal, it's not just about having the meal, it's about the sense of belonging that you find there. It's about feeling welcome. It's about somebody noticing if you don't show up. And I had the opportunity to sit at many meal programs through my previous work, and to see kind of just like the family that's kind of built within those groups that attend those meal programs. And so I'm really glad to see that we're going to look at this, and I, and I hope that we see more of it. Thank you.
Counsel Carpenter?
Yeah, I can support this amendment. I do have one concern to make sure that we don't limit those groups that are doing good work. For example, they come, they pull in the neighborhood or downtown, provide food for people on the street, or give them clothing on the street. I want to make sure it doesn't limit those programs or tell those people you can't do that anymore because it's on the street. And I would hope it doesn't limit our volunteerism when it comes to that by having it, having to have a structure inside a building necessarily for those that want to give. I remember Marilyn's coat drive, for example. She used to collect winter coats and hand them out. I'm hoping that we don't restrict the volunteerism aspect by this. I know that's not the intent, but I want to make sure the policy come back doesn't do that. Thank you.
All right. Not seeing anyone else? Call the vote on the amendment.
And the amendment carried on a recorded vote of 10 to zero. All those voting in favor are Mayor Davis, Counselor Sullivan, Caputo, Sless, Martin McCurry, Carpenter, Hunt, Samuel, and Van Tilburg.
Any discussion as amended? Seeing none, call the vote.
Thank you. Item 7.1.6 carried unanimously on a recorded vote of 10 to zero. All those voting in favor are Mayor Davis, Counselor Sullivan, Caputo, Sless, Martin McCurry, Carpenter, Hunt, Samuel, and Van Tilburg.
Thank you. And now 7.1.7, Counselor Hunt, you asked for this to be separated?
I did, and through you, a few questions regarding the staff report that came as a result of the resolution on September the 23rd. So through you to staff, first of all, I just wanted to correct number four, the executive summary indicates that the deputy mayor for External Relations was appointed on August the 7th, 2025. Just wanted to confirm that that's actually August the 1st of 2025? On page one of the report.
Through you, Mr. Chair, confirming it's August 1st.
Okay. And then the, going on further, the staff report, Section 6.1 outlines the rationale being four specific initiatives. FCM, AMO, the Ontario Big City Mayor's Caucus, and the Great Lakes Cities Initiative. Is that the, your understanding of the initiatives?
Through you, worship you. That's my understanding of the initiatives based on my discussions with Mayor Davis.
Okay. And then at the end of the report, Section 12 states in conclusion that the delegation of the deputy mayor for External Relations position was deemed necessary by the mayor and is permissible under the Municipal Act. And I'm wondering, under what section of the Municipal Act have you deemed it permissible?
Through you, worship. So that's a broad statement, and I made that conclusion based on the input that I received from the solicitor, that it is consistent with the Municipal Act. I didn't draw a conclusion because the solicitor did draw his own conclusions when he wrote the opinion.
Okay. And then just one last question. The organizational chart for the municipality, can you confirm that the organizational chart for municipality, if we download it, have downloaded it from the website, that the head of that organizational chart is in fact yourself as the CAO?
Through you, Mr. Chair, if I understand the correction, or the question, is the, the head of the municipality myself as CAO?
No, the organizational structure, if you download the organizational chart from the, from the city's website, the organizational chart for the municipality is, starts with the CAO being yourself.
Through you, Mr. Chair. So it's my understanding, we're, I'm not sure what the, what the chart on the website says, that I am the senior staff member of the organization. I do report to Mayor Davis.
Okay. Thank you. And then I'm not sure where my time is. Okay. I did have a couple of questions regarding the mayor's memo, and I'm not sure if that's appropriate to ask those questions of staff.
Are they legal in nature?
No.
No. Are they legal in nature? No, you may ask.
Okay. I just wanted to start again, that the first sentence of the mayor's memo says that on August 8th, he appointed the deputy mayor of External Relations. And again, I just want to clarify that we're talking about August the 1st, which was, and I see the mayor nodding. Second page, about halfway down, following the FCM conference, just want to confirm that that's held in June, that there, that the mayor decided that he required the assistance of a designated council member. One of the requests in the original resolution was, when was the deputy mayor made aware of the appointment? And that is not covered either in the staff report or the mayor's memo. And I'm wondering if I can get an answer to that.
That answer would have to be answered by staff, because we cannot cross-talk.
Yes.
Through, through you, Mr. Chair, I don't have the answer to that question. I believe it would be appropriate maybe to, to request the mayor to answer it.
Mayor Davis?
Yeah, an excellent question. And I thought the memo did, that I provided, did describe that. Perhaps it wasn't specific enough. Anyways, it was right after the FCM conference that, that I had that conversation with Council. Sorry, I should have been more clear about that, but that's what it was.
And that is time. Moving on, Counselor Sless?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, to one of the lawyers, I don't know who worked on this, but was anything illegal done?
Good evening, Kim Jolly, City Solicitor and Director of Legal Services. That is, to answer that question, would be to give, in open session, part of the legal analysis that we have provided to you in a confidential memo. And so if you did want to discuss that further, we would recommend that council move in camera so that we can have a fulsome discussion of that solicitor-client privileged information.
Let me ask a different way. With what was done, was in, was the mayor within his rights to do that as an elected mayor?
Through the Chair, unfortunately, the answer is the same as the previous question. It would still require legal advice to answer that question.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? First time? Mayor Davis?
Yeah, I can clarify that. So there's actually two ways to do this. And that, so I'm not giving, I'm not repeating what the solicitor has advised us. I'm telling you the conclusions that I came to when I looked at this after, after I missed the FCM conference and had to call upon Counselor Secolia in short and notice the cover for me, which really kind of brought it to a head, combined with the injury that I had in the UConn, which kind of made it clear to me that I really was not going to be able to fully perform all my duties. Anyways, as I said previously, the, the role of a mayor has, a mayor has two roles. One is as the head of council, and that's the executive function. And then there is the role of the mayor as set out in Section 224 and 226, one of the Municipal Act, where the mayor is described as the chief executive officer of the municipality. And that's, so that's not, that's not a legislative role. Council's legislative, so if you're kind of thinking, it's kind of like, you know, the Senate, and then there's the executive responsibility that I have as a CEO. And that is separate from my role as the head of council. It is entirely separate. It's very distinct. And those two sections say that, that I, it's this, the mayor that represents the city at official functions, and the mayor is also required to act as a representative of the municipality, both within and outside the municipality, both locally, nationally, internationally. So when I'm going to events, I'm not going as the head of council. I'm not representing city council. I'm actually representing the city organization as a chief executive officer. And it was my conclusion that because I have that role described in the Municipal Act, and that doesn't assign any of that role to the members of council or the council itself, that I have the, the right and the ability and the legislative authority to decide who is going to represent me when I can't attend an event. And, you know, technically, we have the mayor of the month, which applies to community of the whole sharing, it applies to signing documents, it applies to who takes over for a council meeting when I can't attend. But it does, technically, it's up to the mayor to decide whether it's a ribbon-cutting, whatever it is, where the city is being asked to send a representative, it's either the mayor or the mayor's designate, and that's really what the Municipal Act says. And there's no case law that says anything to the contrary. But we had developed a protocol here in Branford where, and it's, it's a mayor's protocol, it's not a council protocol, it's a mayor's protocol where we follow the alternating structure month by month, where we have someone, if I can't make it, going to a ribbon-cutting, those kinds of events. But when you're talking about organizations like the OBCM, the FCM, AMO, the Great Lakes Cities Mayors, what's required there, if I can't make it, you have to have a continuity, you have to have a continu, a continuous presence, because issues carry over from one meeting to the next. And so although it's okay to ribbon-cutting to send any member of council, if you're talking about an organization, especially like OBCM, where we have our most impact, you really need to have a consistency there. And it's really got to be one person in particular. And as I said, the Municipal Act, I think, is pretty clear that that's my authority. And I'd say, if you want to hear the legal opinion, bring a motion to waive privilege. There's two-thirds vote, and it becomes public. I'm quite happy to do that. I think that opinion should be out there publicly. So in fact, I would move a motion that we, as an organization, waive the privilege on that memo, and that'd be released to the public. Looking for a second?
Seconded by Counsel Caputo. Any discussion on it? Counsel McCurry?
I'd like to hear from the lawyer.
Through the Chair, I'm not quite sure what the question is.
Is staff comfortable sharing an opinion with the public that they have told us to remain in camera? And in your professional opinion, does this override the confidential information that you have provided us? And what are the consequences?
Through the Chair, in order to give that answer, it would also be solicitor-client privileged advice. And so we can move in camera to discuss whether or not we should waive privilege to, to have a more fulsome discussion.
So let me understand this. Irony of ironies, sort of like our committee that studied committees, we need to go in camera to hear an opinion about whether or not we should not go in camera, to hear something in the public realm.
Through the Chair, the purpose of the opinion given in camera tonight, to discuss whether or not you should waive the solicitor-client privilege of the opinion that was given earlier to council, would be to discuss the risks, the potential liabilities that might, made arise, the reasons why it should either be protected or not protected, as the case may be. So it would be to give you a more fulsome understanding of the risks of waiving the, the privilege that's associated with that advice.
Thank you. Now, do I still have the floor? Just what, through you, Mr. Chair, perhaps what the mayor was going to say was far more important than what I was going to say. So I will yield the floor. Very unlikely that would.
Unfortunately, the mayor will have to wait as we have somebody else in queue. Counsel Van Tilburg?
In that case, I was not finished.
Okay.
So I think probably the, the sensible thing for us to do is simply to follow what we've done all these years, and simply accept that in-camera recommendation and maintain that confidentiality rather than engage in a, an exercise of one-upmanship here.
Counsel Van Tilburg?
Well, puzzled as things can be right now, because I'm sure the public doesn't understand exactly what's going on. Speaking to the motion that's currently on the floor, I am actually putting forward a motion to go in camera so that we can ask those questions.
And your second? Counsel Samuel?
Speaking of second?
Any discussion on that? Call the vote.
And I just wanted to be clear that we're going into closed session to talk about 7.1.7, Deputy Mayor for External Relations, advice that is subject to solicitor-client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose. And the motion to move in camera lost on a tie. All those in favor are Mayor Davis, Counselors Sullivan, Sless, Samuel, Van Tilburg. Those opposed, Counselors Hunt, Carpenter, McCurry, Martin, and Caputo.
Okay, back to the, the motion Mayor Davis had brought forth, and he wanted to speak again, so.
I'd say, Mr. Chair, I seem to recall the mayor having spoken twice already.
No, just once.
Oh, on the cross-talk, you mean?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, it wasn't cross-talk. It was a resolution that would, well, we've already debated some we've already debated, so I'm not going to debate it further. So I, you know, I thought my memo made it, I tried to be as clear as I possibly could be. Why, I thought this was in the best interest of the city so that we have a high level of representation, consistent representation with organizations outside of the municipality. I tried to respect the desire, I know, of council members that they also be able to participate in representing the city.
Point of order?
Go ahead.
Are we not speaking on the mayor's original amendment?
No.
We're actually speaking on, you asked-
Yeah, and the mayor is not speaking on-
Waive the privilege.
Yeah.
So you're supposed to be speaking to that.
Okay, so, so I got confusing. Yeah, so I would suggest that we waive the privilege. I think it requires, can I have the, does it take a two-thirds vote to waive privilege, or is it a majority vote? Majority? So on that, I'm glad Counselor Carpenter corrected me to get me focused. I have no problem with the opinion being divulged. I think it would help the public, and I think it would help us understand that, you know, what the difference is in the roles of a mayor and the different roles that a mayor has, and how that interacts with the authority that council members have under the section of this block that applies to council members. So I think it would be useful to do that.
And Counselor Carpenter, you wish to speak to us? No?
Point of order. Point of order. Could, could you please offer the explanation of how waiving privilege differs from waiving the rules requiring a supermajority?
Kim?
Through the chair, with respect to the waiving of privilege of, of solicitor-client privilege, in this particular case, there isn't a procedural rule that speaks to this directly in the procedure bylaw, the city's procedure bylaw. So it would just go to a decision that council has to make in order to achieve the objective, which is a simple majority.
Thank you.
Not seeing anybody else on the motion? Waiving the privilege? And call the vote.
The amendment lost on a tie of five to five. Those in favor, Mayor Davis, Counselor Sullivan, Caputo, Sless, and Counselor Samuel. Those opposed, Counselor Martin, McCurry, Carpenter, Hunt, and Van Tilburg.
All right, back to the original counsel, Carpenter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You're doing a fine job tonight. In the report, it talks about forty-two different municipalities and the process they went through to get deputy mayor or deputy mayors. And clearly, all of them except for Toronto, of course, became a council vote, either by bylaw or by a council vote. And the previous term of council, when the mayor then decided we needed deputy mayors, it was a vote of council. And I think we had like four deputy mayors at one time in, in order. So to me, that, that would have been the proper procedure going forward would be to make a recommendation to council. If it was deemed necessary to have a deputy mayor, as the mayor has said, then we should, he should have made a recommendation out of this council. We shouldn't have had a surprise email, fourteen days' notice or ten days' notice, whatever it was now. We should have come back to council and said, you know, you could have used the mayor of the month at the time, and then bring a resolution to the council to appoint a deputy mayor if so necessary. And if it's such, if it is so necessary, as has been spoken about, then why aren't we changing the process for election in the next twenty-twenty-six election? Why isn't there a deputy mayor position on the ballot if a deputy mayor is such needed? In some of the municipalities, it was the council that received the most votes of all the wards that became the deputy mayor automatically. So this way, you avoid the, you know, the perception of favoritism, or you avoid the perception of somebody being profiled for the next municipal election, for example. So it, it provides more clarity. And that's what, that's what the problem, this reason this is all before us is because of the way it was done, quite frankly. And I'm not one that believes that, that the strong mayor's powers gave us the mayor the authority to do that. I don't believe that. But I, I think that the process was clear, should come back to council, and council should be deciding. And the mayor of the month worked very well, and it gave us far more authority than when I was mayor of the month back when we had to have a, we had to close Brannav for a funeral for a soldier that died in Afghanistan. And I had to make that decision. And was able, I was able to do it because we have legislation that allows, that provides in our bylaws mayor of the month duties and responsibilities. So it, we just, so to, so for me, the right process would be to bring appointment back to this council and have council ratify it if that's the, the case. And that avoids any, any perception at all. So that's what I would have supported. Thank you.
Counselor Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the report, six point one point three, it talks about the AMO conference. And it says that Counselor Secoli attended in place of the mayor. My understanding at the time was that Counselor Secoli was going to that in any case. And when I was informed that the mayor was going to be unable to go as mayor of the month, I offered to take his place with the understanding that he probably wouldn't be able to get a refund of his registration or his hotel costs. And unfortunately, I never heard back from staff as to whether that was an option or not. And I wonder if staff can explain whether or not they got a refund on the mayor's registration and hotel.
Through the chair, we can look into that. We'll have to verify that.
Yeah, because it was very short notice, and I know that it would, would have been too late to get a refund, in my opinion, and I was surprised that I didn't at least get an answer as to whether that was an option to transfer his registration to me or not. One other thing, the, the resolution asked for the education level of Counselor Secoli, and that's not in the report. I don't know if anybody can answer that or not, but it would be interesting to know. Guess not.
Through the chair, I think, I think our understanding was whether, was there an educational level desired for the position? We can't answer that question, I think, but you know, if, if the mayor did not include it in his, in his memo, we don't have an answer for it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Caputo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. When, when this was brought to us back in September, I, I asked a question to staff and basically, because I didn't understand the actual motion itself, but it was brought forth that staff would give us a report. What I need to know is, under the strong mayor powers, is there authority to do exactly what Mayor Davis has done by appointing a deputy mayor?
Through the chair, the strong mayor powers speak to organizational structure of the municipality. And the organizational structure of the municipality is not defined within the section pursuant to the Municipal Act. So there is the ability to look at the other sections of the Municipal Act and determine whether or not there is anything analogous that can be used to determine or to help understand what that section is meant to mean. In looking at other sections, there are, of the strong mayor powers, there are specific references to employees. And then there are different references to the organizational structure. So the opinion is that it can, yes, stretch to include this under the organizational structure language of the Municipal Act at this time.
Okay, perfect, because that's the exact information I was given when I reached out to the province to find this out. Because in my opinion, this is a strong mayor decision. Actually, in the last time we met here, I had something written up because normally I like to speak off the cuff, but at this particular time, I actually wrote something, and I had to dig it out to bring today. Some people are worried about the mayor using these types of powers to appoint a deputy mayor. But this authority is both seen, deemed legal and necessary. The strong mayor system was created because mayors used to have less independence than provincial premiers and a prime minister. They do not bring to their members and have them vote on who is going to be a minister in their cabinet. Since the public holds the mayor accountable for all the results that happen within the city, it makes sense that the mayor should also have the tools to act quickly, especially on issues that affect the city's stability and its direction. Excuse me. The mayor's choice was within his legal rights and based on necessity, not politics. Good leadership requires a reliable team, and appointing someone who shares the same vision ensures consistency in representing the city. The deputy mayor role doesn't come with extra pay, doesn't come with extra powers. It's simply a title added to existing responsibilities meant to support the mayor when he or she is unavailable. Given the mayor's health challenges and growing demands outside of City Hall due to the economic pressures, this appointment was a practical and a responsible move. Some council argued it should have been consulted, but not every decision needs a lengthy debate. And as you can see here tonight, we can't decide whether we're going to go in camera or not, or if something is going to go legal. So especially when time is critical. With the trade pressures like tariffs, Canadian goods that's happening, cities must act quickly. The mayor's decision was fast instead of waiting for council approval shows a proactive leadership. This appointment doesn't weaken democracy. It strengthens it. It strengthens it by ensuring that the city can respond effectively to urgent challenges as they arise. In the end, the strong mayor's power, in my opinion, was designed for situations like this when a decisive action is needed. While open discussion is valuable, not every discussion requires full council approval. The mayor acted legally, transparently, although it would have been nice to have something brought to us prior to having read it in the email, and in the best interest that I believe in Branford. Instead of focusing on the process, we should focus on the outcome. A city that's better prepared to face challenges with leadership that's aligned and ready.
Counselor McCurry?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, this is awkward, isn't it? Having to have this debate, it's a shame that this is before us today. I'm not going to deal with the legalities or the moralities or any of the other itties around a decision that was made some time ago with respect to the deputy mayor. What I do want to talk about is what we've been told were the reasonings and the shortcomings that led to the decision being made that created this position. Firstly, I'd like to talk about the Great Lakes and St. Lawrence Cities Initiative, which was specified as one of the needful gaps in the mayor's ability to cover all bases. The Great Lakes and St. Lawrence Cities Initiative is intended to advance the protection and restoration of the Great Lakes. We're forty K away on our watershed, as well managed by GRCA. Some of the initiatives of the Great Lakes and St. Lawrence Cities Initiative are as follows. Regulating floating cottages, the status of striped bass in the St. Lawrence, invasive carp in the Great Lakes, and the problem with mercury at Thunder Bay. I would posit that this is not an initiative which is of any importance to City of Branford when we're dealing with homelessness, crime, and affordability at home, not to mention all the other things on our plates, thanks to the provincial and federal governments. I don't recall approving membership in this organization. We're certainly not listed members, and if we are, we probably shouldn't be. Secondly, I want to address what was cited as the need with respect to the Ontario Big City Mayor's Organization. The memo that we received today says, at the bottom of the first page, for those of you watching at home, the protocol has been not to designate a council member to attend in a mayor's absence unless they have the status of a deputy mayor. And that seems to have been an oversight with respect to the writing of that memo. The OBCM, Ontario Big City Mayor's Terms of Reference, says a mayor may send a designate if he or she cannot attend. There's no reference to the position of deputy mayor. And in fact, if members of council will review the document that we received, which oddly enough is all in camera, which I find odd for a publicly facing organization using public funds, I would draw your attention to pages one, page thirty-one, and page thirty-six, which repeatedly demonstrates the presence of counselors and acting mayors representing their cities in mayor's absences. So clearly, that was an oversight with respect to the memo. Counselors are welcome to attend. Acting mayors are welcome to attend. Additionally, of the twenty-nine big cities, the following twelve cities, all with populations larger than us, have no deputy mayor positions. How am I doing for time? Getting closer. Perhaps I will enjoy the opportunity to say the rest of this at a subsequent speaking engagement, Mr. Chair.
Moving on to second time speakers, Counselor Hunt.
Okay, and just very quickly, I just again back to the mayor's memo. The mayor's memo, second page, about three quarters of the way down, actually indicates that under section two twenty-five and two twenty-six of the Municipal Act, that he had the authority to implement the deputy mayor model. If we go to the mayoral decision, it cites two eighty-four point six of the Municipal Act. And so at this time, I'd like to introduce an amendment.
There's others in queue for second time speaking, if you want to bring that back.
Okay.
Counselor Sless?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm reading the, the resolution before us, and it says we're going to make a request of the mayor. I'm not sure what that means. We're, we're going to ask that perhaps he do something. Perhaps he won't. I don't know. There's no ramification to that, but it, we're making a request. So I, I have concerns with that.
We got a point of order. Counselor Hunt?
The amendment does not get on the floor, which is what the speakers referred to.
The amendment's not on the floor. We're not there yet.
Okay, sorry. I thought I was reading the, anyway, okay, skip that. I guess from my perspective, nothing legal, illegal has taken place. Could this process have been out, rolled out better? Yes. There should have been notification. I, I don't think there needs to be approval, but I think there should be notification. I, I don't think it's correct that an elected official finds out what the head of their council is doing after the fact. It, it should have probably been before the fact via a memo. I think that, that would have gone a long way from my perspective of having concerns about what took place. But as, as far as the ability to do it, I, I, I don't see why one couldn't do that if you're the mayor. So I, I'll wait to hear the, well, I see the amendment. I have concerns with it, but we'll deal with that when we get to it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mayor Davis, second time.
Yeah, glad to answer some of the questions raised and concerns. First of all, in respect to a deputy mayor, this is not in any way similar to what we did in the last council when I had the cancer surgery. Because in that scenario, we were appointing, it was actually Counsel Rutley, that he was appointed to perform all of the duties that I could perform as a mayor, including signing documents, appearing at council, chairing council meetings, all of which is within the proper purview of council to make that decision. I was very specific about the decision I made at the end of July, first of August, that it did not apply to any of that. It did not supersede those powers that council members have. And it really was me appointing Counselor Secoli to be my designate for, as I said, external matters. And the reason why I gave her the title of deputy mayor, and I think this is where the confusion arises, that it's not a traditional deputy mayor. It's very much like what Toronto does, which is appointing a deputy mayor to deal with a certain subject matter and giving the title so that, that that person has the authority and the credibility when they're dealing with outside organizations. And I'd say this about the Great Lakes Cities Initiative, it's really morphed since Mr. Trump's election. And it's now become, which is why Mayor Cisco suggested I join, it's become the major grassroots advocacy organization promoting economic development and free trade in the Great Lakes basin, and is being very effective at that. In respect to the OBCM, you know, I've been there. I've been there many times, and there are sometimes you go in camera. And it's very clear that, that you have to have the status of a deputy mayor to be able to participate in the in-camera sessions. But more importantly, and it worked really well at AMO, when you're dealing with cabinet ministers, it, they tend to listen more to someone who has that deputy mayor title. And that was also on my mind, knowing that I probably wasn't going to get to AMO, that Counselor Secoli would have to lead the delegations. Also, there was an OBCM meeting at the beginning of AMO that can provide much more effective representation to our city when you have that title. As I said previously, when I talked about this, that may have been the mistake I may, was maybe putting that title. was maybe putting that title. I suspect most, he wouldn't have had a problem with me designating one council in particular for the purpose of continuity at these various events. But, uh, it's in no way comparable to what we did at council before. Um, I repeat, I'm, I'm just, I'm not going to repeat myself, I was confident when I made the decision that I had the necessary authority in the municipal act to do it, and nothing I've seen since has changed my mind. In fact, if anything, it's supported the decision I made, uh, in my own mind in August. And as I said previously, I, I did apologize, I should have rolled it out with more notice, but it did come, kind of come to a head when I was, uh, visiting my daughter in the Yukon, and I had, uh, the, I suffered a fairly significant injury, and I realized I had to do something quickly, as I was unlikely going to be able to attend OBCM in August, uh, AMO, and, uh, also subsequent Great Lakes Mayor Conference. And I think events have proven, demonstrate that's exactly what happened. Uh, it would have been, uh, somewhat, uh, disorganized, the representation we had at AMO, but for the fact that I'd made the decisions, was actually quite fortuitous. The reality is this, it worked out well for the city. We were well represented with Counselor Sikoli aided by Counselor Samwell, uh, at the AMO conference, and it worked out for the betterment of the city, and isn't that what we're here to do? Not get caught up in inter-nestine warfare and actually do what we can to represent the city as best we can. And so, I'll leave it at that.
Counselor McCrery, second time.
It's hard to follow a speaker who uses the phrase inter-nestine warfare. It's almost like, almost like following Mayor Eddy when he used to speak, uh, for those of you who recall Mayor Eddy. Anyway, so let me just pick up where I left off. So, um, clearly, the presence of councillors in the OBCM in-camera meetings, uh, testifies to the fact that you don't have to be deputy mayor to participate, it's in the minutes. Um, so, of all these OBCM communities of the twenty-nine, there are about twelve that, uh, that have no deputy mayor position, but who are represented at OBCM, uh, Ajax, hundred and twenty-seven thousand people, Cambridge, hundred and sixty-six thousand people, Chatham Canop, one eleven, Guelph, one fifty-nine, Kitchener, three hundred and twenty-nine thousand people, Milton, hundred and fifty-two thousand people, Oakville, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand people, Pickering, hundred and fifteen thousand people, Thunder Bay, a hundred and thirty-three thousand people, Waterloo, a hundred and fifty-five thousand people, and coming in with a higher number, Windsor, three forty-four. Um, none of these have deputy mayors, they all participate fully at OBCM. When their mayor can't be there, they have a deputy, sorry, when their mayor can't be there, they have no deputy mayor, so they send a councillor. Um, we are about ninety-eight thousand, according to our website, the highway signs say we're like one oh five, so we are the smallest. Uh, OBCM meetings are hybrid or virtual, you can go or not go. Um, so, you know, in summary, any member of this council could appear at OBCM in the mayor's place and be welcomed. Um, travel's not necessary, the meetings are half a day. We are, of course, the, probably the newest and most junior with the smallest population. Uh, so, I, I say that, um, without, you know, being inter-nestine, and I'm going to look that up when I get home, um, and I'll look that up when I get home, um, I simply question the need for it and accede to the fact that if there was a need at one time, there no longer is. The mayor's hail and hearty, and, um, it's the time savings from not participating in the, uh, what's it called again? The Great Lakes and St. Lawrence Seaway Working Group, we're, we're, we're well represented by FCM and AMO with respect to our concerns about cross-border, uh, business, and, uh, really, it's an initiative that we, we shouldn't be involved in. Uh, so, I don't take issue with the mayor's, um, with the mayor's legality, uh, to do these things. I, I don't think the mayor would break the law, I don't think he would violate a bylaw, I've been to his house and it's well, well, well-maintained. Um, the mayor is very respectful of the processes. I simply think that there was no need to do this. It's caused, you know, some degree of angst and discord amongst the eleven of us, and, um, you know, now and again, I go to the gas station and somebody asks me what the heck this was all about, and I can't answer it. And I think that's positioned a lot of us, and so, I, 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 uh, those are my comments with respect to both the mayor and the, uh, minister, sorry, not the minister, External Affairs, the deputy mayor for External Affairs, thank you.
All right, going back to, uh, Counselor Hunt with your amendment.
Okay, moved by myself and seconded by Counselor McCrery. The council respectfully requests that Mayor Davis terminate the appointment of deputy mayor for external relations, effective immediately as it is not compliant with section two eighty-four point six of the municipal act, being the section cited as his authority in the mayoral decision zero eight dash twenty twenty-five, and that should Mayor Davis deem he requires the assistance to fulfill his duties that extend beyond the Mayor of the Month Acting Mayor Bylaw one sixty-three dash twenty twenty-two, that he bring a request back to council for consideration. And if I can speak to the amendment, um, after reading, um, the mayor's memo, it, it appears, unfortunately, that there was a, a series of unfortunate events that happened, uh, throughout the summer, um, and, uh, he's basically indicated right in the memo that he felt that he needed to act quickly in order to, um, kind of head off his inability to attend, um, uh, FCM and AMO. And I just, I wanted to put out there, first of all, FCM will not meet again until next June, AMO will not happen again until next August, both of which are during, um, after the election, um, has been called on the first of May. And I understand both the Great Lakes City Group, um, and the Ontario Big City Mayor's Caucus, uh, both meet quarterly, so we're talking about potentially, um, one to two other meetings that will happen between now and the first of May. But the, the, the real issue, I think, that I take with it is that section two eighty-four point six was the authority that was laid out in the mayoral decision, um, and that specific section speaks to the strong mayor powers and the ability to, um, change the organizational structure of municipality. The organizational structure of the municipality, if you download the organizational chart, starts with the CAO, and the rest of that, uh, two eighty-four point six deals specifically with staff positions. Um, and so, for that reason, I, I don't believe that section two eighty-four point six was, in fact, the correct, um, section of the municipal act to use. And in fact, in the mayor's memo, he has further gone on to say that under section two twenty-five and two twenty-six of the municipal act, that that was his authority for doing so. Those are not the sections of the municipal act that are cited in the mayoral decision. And so, for that reason, um, I feel that it's, it's either one or the other. It's two eighty-four point six, which is the organizational structure of the municipality, or it's two twenty-five and two twenty-six of the municipal act, which does not, and I don't want to bore anybody, and I would use up more than my four minutes, um, but does not, um, in fact, two twenty-six talks about substitution, and that a municipality may, with the consent of the head of council, appoint a member of council to act in the place of the head of council on anybody other than on the council of another municipality. That speaks to a substitution, um, in that situation, and that's two twenty-six. But those are not the sec, sections of the municipal act that were cited in the mayoral decision that appointed the deputy mayor.
Anyone else to the amendment? Oh, Counselor Caputo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I question the staff. So, based on strong mayor, mayor powers, whether this amendment passes or not, can the mayor strike it down? Would it not be looked at as a legal overreach?
Uh, through the chair, to answer that question, I would be required to give legal advice, and so I'm unable to do that in open session.
Okay, that, okay.
Anyone else? Mayor Davis.
Yeah, I think I've been pretty clear that, um, uh, this is, in my view, that it's overreached by, if this passes, it's overreached by the council, uh, in an area that it does not have authority. And I'll tell you right now that I won't, the request, you can make the request all you want, I'm not changing my decision. I had the authority to do it, I stand by it, both in my best interest in terms of issues I have with my own health, but also, I think it's a pretty effective way of being able to represent, uh, the municipality at these various meetings, which is more than just an annual meeting, there are very many subcommittee meetings. Uh, if you think that my job, when it comes to external relations, consists of one or two meetings a year, that's not the way it is. It's generally several meetings a month, and, uh, and ever more of them because of the trade situation, the tariff situation, which you seem to ignore, that that's really ramped up the demand on my time to deal with, uh, external agencies and relationships. I think this decision works, and I'm not changing it.
Counselor Carpenter.
Yeah, I, I think I heard the mayor say, "We ignore something," and I take exception to that, he said, "We ignore the issue with tariffs." Um, uh, but I can tell you, we don't ignore it, we see it every day. But, uh, the, the problems I see it is with the strong mayor's powers in the first place, it's anti-democratic, it gives special powers to a mayor over a council, uh, when the councils are all elected individually, and it, to me, I know the province brought it forward, but I find it to be a violation of democratic rights, every citizen of this country that fought for freedom and democracy, so I've never supported it, I still don't.
Counselor Hunt, can you remind us who your seconder was on the amendment?
Sorry, my seconder was, uh, Counselor McCrery.
Thank you. Counselor McCrery.
Uh, Chair, thank you very much. Um, it was mentioned earlier that, um, some of these decision points were made in the best interest of the community. Um, and I would, uh, I would suggest that, um, the ten of us have heard from the community on this issue repeatedly, and, um, there really don't appear to be answers that we can give, uh, that get to the heart of the decision-making process around this. Um, so I, I'm not sure that the community is, uh, is of a mind to accept what's happened here. Um, and I certainly look at this possibly being the most, um, the most divisive thing that's been before this council, certainly in twenty twenty-five. We've done divisive things before, um, but certainly, this has been divisive, and, and you know, when we hear the comments today, uh, and previously, it's not necessarily about whether this was done in accordance with the municipal act, or whether it was done in accordance with the strong mayor powers. Um, Counselor Carpenter, I think, iterates very clearly the concerns some folks have with the strong mayor power, and I don't disagree with him on that. Um, but I think for the benefit of the folks who sit in this room and the folks who work in the corporation of the City of Brantford, I believe there's merit to the ask for this. Um, whether the mayor chooses not to do that is, is up to him, because he is a strong mayor. Uh, however, I, 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 I look at the benefit to the community of continuing in this vein, and I don't believe there is any. Um, and perhaps, you know, if the mayor is not, um, of a mind to reverse his decision, perhaps the councillor who was appointed to be the, I want to be careful how I say this, I keep wanting to say Minister of External Affairs, the deputy mayor, perhaps the deputy mayor may recognize the divisiveness with respect to the input of the council here, and perhaps she may choose to withdraw from the position. That may be something that would be up to her to consider in later date, and it's unfortunate she's not here today.
Yeah.
Hmm, the issue I'm having with this has, is the fact that, uh, no one approached me on the street asking anything about this decision. But, maybe the decision of, uh, the individual might have been in question by some, but at the end of the day, it's still irrelevant. Um, what I am looking at in this particular instance is the fact that, when a mayor has accountability to its city, he or she must be equipped to make sure that they can do the right thing and be aligned with a certain individual that sees everything the way he or she has set it forth. And in this particular case, I am more in tuned with having the strong mayor powers, not that they have to be abused.
Point of order. This isn't about the strong mayor's powers, this is about the amendment, and afterwards, if the amendment passes or fails, you could speak to, uh, what would be on the floor.
Agreed. Just wanted to speak to the amendment.
I'll take a speaking chance next time.
Counselor Hunt, second time.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that, again, the mayoral decision was made under section two eighty-four point six of the municipal act, and now we are talking about section two twenty-five and two twenty-six of the municipal act. So, part of me says, which one is it? Um, but, the structure of the municipality, which is what two eighty-four point six speaks to, um, I mean, we can't bring it up, you could look it up on the website, but starts with the CAO. Council is a, a separate structure, it is not the structure of the municipality, and if you read the rest of two eighty-four point six, it is all related to employees and their, uh, which employees can be, um, basically hired and fired by, uh, by the mayor under the strong mayor power. So, this is a fundamental change to the structure of council, which is not the structure of the municipality. Council is, um, is an elected, uh, body, and so, two eighty-four point six, whether it was the right section of the municipal act or not, um, or as per the mayor's memo, um, now, he's indicating that it's two twenty-five and two twenty-six. That's not what the mayoral decision reads. The mayoral decision reads that the authority is under two eighty-four point six of the municipal act. And so, I just wanted to, to kind of clarify that, that is my rationale for saying that the decision was not compliant.
Counselor Sless.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, it must be the area that Counselor Caputo and I represent, because I, I wasn't approached on this either. I was questioned as to the individual that was selected, but I wasn't questioned about why somebody was selected, uh, and I think there's a big distinction there. Uh, so, I think the problem isn't out in the community, it's around this table, that, that's where the concern is. And it, it, from my perspective, at least, the area that I represent, i- it's, it's not an issue.
Not seeing anyone else, I will, it's to the amendment. I, on the opposite scale from Counselor Sless, have heard a lot about this whole process and the need for it, so I'm back and forth on this as you continue to debate. So, we're going to vote now on the amendment.
And the amendment carried on a recorded vote of seven to three. All those voting in favor are Counselors Sullivan, Martin, McCrery, Carpenter, Hunt, Sam Alvin, Tilbark. Those opposed, Mayor Davis, Counselors Caputo and Sless.
Any discussion as amended. Seeing none, call the vote.
And item seven point one point seven, as amended, carried on a recorded vote of seven to three. All those voting in favor are Counselors Sullivan, Martin, McCrery, Carpenter, Hunt, Sam Alvin, Tilbark. Those opposed, Counselors Sless, Caputo, and Mayor Davis.
Thank you. Now move on to resolutions. There's four resolutions on tonight's agenda. Um, accessible parking, Counselor McCrery, please move your resolution and state your seconder.
Uh, Chair, thank you very much. Um, my seconder is, uh, Counselor Hunt, and, uh, we do have a wording change, and... okay. Okay, this is the second uh, second one. So the resolution reads as follows. Whereas accessible parking is instrumental in making, sorry, in enabling residents to have equal access to workshopping and leisure. And whereas users of accessible parking may have differing needs relating to the nature of their disability. And whereas legislation is in place to permit discernment of accessible parking to allow for wheelchair users, specific designations and locations with multiple accessible parking spaces on private and public property, now therefore be it resolved, staff be directed to prepare a report that outlines the current regulations regarding accessible parking and report back to council uh, by second quarter next year, and that the report be circulated to the Bradford Accessibility Advisory Committee. And um, I'm looking at my secondor. I hope I, I hope that incorporated the recent change, and she's, she's in agreement with that. Anyway, this is um, it's kind of a housekeeping thing that we want to do. Uh, Counsel Hunt and I heard from constituents who suggested this. And uh, we'd just like to have this uh, reviewed by staff and the Accessibility Advisory Committee and see if there are changes that we can make. Um, and um, there is also uh, some concern about the number of spaces, and I'm sure the secondor is going to address that in her remarks.
Counsel Carpenter.
Yes, I, I like this resolution. I think it's long overdue. Uh, we, you know, we've uh, got a criteria for how many accessible spaces must be a specific size of development. But we do know that the population has aged quite a bit. And the, the, the need for more accessible spaces or enough accessible spaces is changed. So part of the review will, will need to look at what other municipalities have done on accessibility and what, what uh, level of accessibility spaces are required for development for the community as a whole. So I'm happy to see this come forward and happy to see it's referred to the Accessibility Advisory Committee as well. Thank you.
Counsel Hunt.
Uh, through you. Yes, so there's a couple of um, uh, things that are in play here. So first of all, accessible parking permits are assigned to individuals, not to vehicles. Um, and they are issued by the province of Ontario. And so that is uh, that is one thing that somewhat hampers our ability to be specific about whether it's um, a permit that's for a wheelchair user. It's just basically an accessible permit. And it's six, it's, it's, as I said, issued to an individual. Um, the second um, thing that, that's in play here is that under the Accessibility for Ontarians with Disabilities Act, the Integrated Standards Accessibility Reg- Regulation specifies how many what we call type A stalls, which are ones that have an access aisle, something that I require for a ramp that deploys out the side, and how many type B stalls, which are ones that don't have the access aisle. And so this report coming back will um, give council all of the information in terms of what's um, what the requirements are in terms of legislation, what we can do about it. One of the uh, challenges that I do think that we do have, especially in large commercial uh, parking lots, uh, is the ratio. And the ratio is um, I don't know. I'm, I'm usually one, if I go to one of our large, whether it be the mall or Walmart, um, I'm usually parked out in the back forty, taking up two spots on an angle because I need to deploy my ramp. So um, I'm, I'm happy to support this. I think it's important for council to understand the parameters around accessible parking permits and what the regulations are. And potentially, we may be able to, uh, as a council, uh, do something that changes that ratio.
Not seeing anything else, call the vote.
Hey, item 8.1, accessible parking, carried on a recorded vote of 10 to zero. All those voting in favor are Mayor Davis, Counselor Sullivan, Caputo, Les, Martin, McCrery, Carpenter, Hunt, Sam Walven, Tilburg.
We've already dealt with 8.2, so 8.3, Professional Activity Day on Municipal Election Day, Counsel Carpenter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Moved by myself, seconded by my wardmate, Counsel Linda Hunt. Whereas municipalities across Ontario are responsible for organizing and administering municipal and school board elections every four years as mandated on the Municipal Act 1996. And whereas local schools are traditionally among the most convenient, accessible and familiar polling locations for voters in all communities. Whereas schools offer important accessibility features such as level entrances, parking and, and public visibility that, that make them ideal polling stations, particularly for seniors, parents and persons with disabilities. And whereas the use of schools as polling locations can lead to increased costs. So, uh, the use of schools as polling stations can lead to, it says increased cost. It should be of increased cost for regards to ensuring the safety and security of students. Sorry, sorry. Whereas ma- many municipalities face challenges securing suitable and accessible alternative voting locations, resulting in increased costs and reduced accessibility for voters. And whereas the Municipal Election Act provides that school boards shall provide their facilities free of charge for the municipal and school board elections. And whereas holding a province-wide professional activity day uh, for the all publicly funded schools on municipal election day would alleviate concerns from school administrators for voting purposes while maintaining student safety. And whereas the coordinated approach would enhance voter convenience, improve accessibility and help strengthen civic engagement and democratic participation by allowing electors to vote at their local schools without disrupting the student safety, safety body. Whereas it would also create efficiencies and potential cost savings for municipalities by reducing the need to rent alternate facilities or implement special security measures. And whereas aligning a professional activity day with the municipal election day would require minimal disruption to the school calendar as school boards already schedule several PA days each academic year. And whereas this measure would demonstrate a spirit of cooperation between the province of Ontario, local municipalities and school boards provide to promote civic engagement and fiscal responsibility. Whereas the Associated Municipalities, Municipal Clerks and Treasurers of Ontario and its members have lobbied for the province to establish a PA day on election day, now therefore be resolved that this coun- the council city of Bradford respectfully requests the Premier of Ontario to consider directing all publicly funded school boards in Ontario to schedule a professional activity day on the date of the municipal election in each election year. And that this direction be made in consultation with the Minister of Education, the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, AMO, and School Board Association to ensure consistency across the province. And that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to the Premier of Ontario, Minister of Education, the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, the Ontario Public School Board Association, the Ontario County School Board Trustees Association, and all Ontario municipalities for their information and support. I'm just raising this, uh, you know, we, we sometimes do have elections in uh, in schools while the kids are in school, and I find that to be a safety issue with the children in school mixing with public that's coming in to vote. And school boards have PA days, eleven or twelve a year, whatever the number may be. So it's just a matter of moving a school day. It's not, it's not gonna be any less PA days or more PA days. It's just adjusting a PA day that coincides with the election that makes it financially feasible and safety for everyone in the client. So that's, that's why I brought this resolution forward. Thank you.
Counsel Van Tilburg.
Um, while I think this is a, a good initiative and, and it may pass, it's actually not the position that uh, I support or believe in. And, and the simple reason is that is that when an election's on and, and it's happening within a school, make no bones about it, those kids are engaged. They are seeing adults come and go into the parking lots. And they know that they're coming. They see the, the big X on their school. And they know there's an election going on. They know that their parents are coming, their parents are gonna vote. And some of those kids, I, and I've met them because I happened to come just near the end of the school day the one time. And you hear them talking as the people are in line going to vote and they say, oh, you're gonna vote, you're gonna vote. And you could see that excitement. And when you have a PA day, that takes away from the excitement. In fact, what the teachers could really be doing is a civics course. Saying why do we have elections? And why do they do this? And why are the public coming out to vote? And, and it helps get them engaged to think that this is important to know. That adults are coming, make that vote instead of them, you know, playing at home. The other part I have an issue with is that parents are often at work. And for them to vote, some of them have to take time off work. Well, can you imagine if you have kids? And now you've got to find a way to take care of your kids just because it's a voting day. You know, it, it could be an extra stress, not that it always is. It just could be. And so I'm just saying that not that this is a bad idea. We've had these discussions all the time. But there's two sides to everything. And I've seen the positives of, of when you do have uh, an election happening when the school is open. I've also seen when the school's been closed and we have an election and yeah, it's pretty quiet.
Counsel Hunt.
Yeah, I just wanted basically to speak to it from the standpoint of um, that we have, we have schools that are co-located with uh, community centers. And so the uh, the polling station is actually in the community center. Um, but you do need to access the school in order to the school's front door. And and, and I'm, I'm gonna say the, the Branlin Notre Dame uh, complexes is one that um, for decades, when I lived up there, going over to vote during the school day um, was a challenge, first of all, because all of the parking out front was taken up by the teachers that were working that day. Um, and a lot of people don't realize that in order to access the community center, you have to go around the back of the school. So for that reason, I'm, I'm happy to support it just because I'm um, I'm very aware um, of that location in particular, uh, where um, having a PA day and having school, in this case, two schools, uh, not be in would actually be advantageous for the uh, for the voters on voting day.
Counsel Caputo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I'm absolutely gonna support this. I thought it was very well-written and very well-thought. Uh, I never gave thought in the past of uh, you know, not only ensuring safety at schools and various things like that, but I, I mean, just everything in general. When, when there's an election happening, I think it's imperative that everybody has that opportunity to vote and everything that we can do in our power to ensure that that's done in a proper, safe and, and an easy environment. Um, if, if a high school is being used for a, a voting uh, center, um, it's difficult because most high school students drive their own vehicles. So it's difficult to park. It's difficult to get in and out. And uh, I just, I applaud Counsel Carpenter for bringing this forward. I think it was very smart and well-written.
All right, I'm gonna say a few words here. First of all, thank you Counsel Carpenter for bringing this forward. I'll get to you in a second, Counsel McCrery. Um, however, I don't share some of the sentiments that have been uh, shared here tonight. Uh, I find that when you're having voting going on with students are in the school, yes, they're noticing that it's taking place, but unfortunately, it's distracting them from the work being done in the classroom. So they're actually losing the opportunity to learn on that particular day. Not to mention the fact that the schools that we have in the city have lockdowns now. So there's a lot of extra security features that are there that weren't there when I was a child. But at the end of the day, you're now putting that lockdown system out of order while there's an election going on, which is increasing the risk for the children that are in the school. So I too will be supporting it, Counsel Carpenter. Counsel McCrery, you're up.
Chair, thank you very much. Well, it's not often that I come in here and uh, I'm convinced to vote other than I was going to vote before I sat down. And I listened to what Counselor Van Tilburg said, and I think he makes a lot of sense. And um, but it comes down to two words. And I'll reiterate what was said about Counselor Carpenter's skill with the pen in terms of writing this resolution. Uh, respectfully request the Premier of Ontario to consider. And I'm, of course, a big supporter of the provincial government. I think everybody knows that. Um, and I believe that they will consider and they'll probably take into account the very point of view that uh, Counsel Van Tilburg expressed and the Chair expressed. Uh, so I'm happy that the correct decision would be made. Uh, I would ask one additional thing, and perhaps it's just my reading skills, but I don't see any mention of MPP Willie in this with respect to including him in the correspondence. And I wonder if the, whoever is secondor might just pencil that in, uh, in addition to the other folks.
It's friendly. Any further? Counsel Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, it's been suggested that it's a great uh, civic learning opportunity for students to see people voting, but it doesn't have to be a civic lesson on election day. It can be another day. And uh, there's an organization that does student votes. And they, they actually have the students vote for the party of their choice uh, in an election. Uh, I think it usually occurs before election day. Uh, I can't remember if the results are posted before or after the election, but it's, it's something that the students will all see the, the signs on the lawns. Then maybe you see the brochures that get left in their mailbox or, or given to their, their parents when someone comes knocking on their door. They might even have the opportunity to talk to a candidate or two that come around. So it's a great learning opportunity for students, yes, but it doesn't have to be on election day. They're, they're better served by not being in the school on election day, uh, for, for reasons that have been already stated, lockdowns and, and various other things. And uh, there have been times in the past when teachers have utilized students to kind of protest a particular party during an election when people are coming in to vote, which is highly inappropriate. And uh, I think that uh, this resolution will remove that as a, an option during the election. So uh, I fully support this. I think it's a great idea. It's unfortunate this wasn't uh, thought of sooner because uh, it's something that definitely needs to be looked at. And, and I hope the province will, will listen to us on this one and, and at least consider it. Thank you.
All right, we'll call the vote.
And item 8.3, carried on a recorded vote of eight to two. All those voting in favor are Counselors Sullivan, Caputo, Les, Martin, McCrery, Carpenter, Hunt, Sam Wal. Those opposed, Counsel Van Tilburg and Mayor Davis.
Thank you. We'll now move on to 8.4, Growing Community Resilience, Vertical Farming for Food Security. Counsel Sam Wal. Please move it and state your secondor.
Thank you. Um, so moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Van Tilburg. Growing community resilience, vertical farming for food security. Whereas food security and access to fresh, healthy produce is a priority for the city of Bradford. And where, and the city has declared a local food insecurity emergency and endorsed the Food Security Community Action Plan to guide long-term collaborative solutions. And whereas modular vertical farming technology has emerged as, as a page six of 305 proven and innovative initia- uh, innovative solutions to grow vegetables and leafy greens locally year-round regardless of weather conditions with benefits for food access, climate resilience, education and community health. And whereas companies such as Grocer currently provide modular vertical farm units to municipalities and community partners across Canada, including the city of Kingston. And whereas the Brant Food Systems Coalition and its network of community partners continue to play a key role in addressing food insecurity and advancing food system solutions in Bradford. Now therefore be resolved that staff be directed to consult with the Brant Food Systems Coalition and other relevant community stakeholders on the feasibility of introducing a modular vertical farm system in Bradford to support year-round access to fresh, locally grown vegetables and leafy greens. Staff be directed to review and report back by the end of Q1 2026 on the capital and ongoing operational costs associated with acquiring and maintaining a modular vertical farm unit, the potential economic, social, environmental and public health benefits of such an initiative. A full cost benefit analysis, including lifecycle costs, potential revenue streams and staffing or training needs. Creating funding and partnership opportunities to support implementation and long-term sustainability, including grants, private part, private sponsorships and collaborations with nonprofits, educational institutions and local industry. And that's, and see that staff report back to council with the findings and recommendations at a future meeting, including whether a modular, a modular or vertical farming initiative could be incorporated as part of the implementation, implementation of the Food Security Community Action Plan. And just to speak to that a little bit, I'm pleased to bring this resolution forward tonight because it builds on the city's commitment to addressing food insecurity and strengthening community well-being. Access to fresh, healthy produce should be reliable for everyone, yet seasonal limitations, transportation barriers and rising costs continue to make it difficult. Exploring modular, modular vertical farming is one way we can widen that access. Vertical farms allow year-round production of vegetables and leafy greens regardless of the weather. Beyond increasing supply, they support climate resilience, education opportunities and community engagement. Other municipalities are actively exploring similar approaches where, with community partners, and we can learn from that momentum. This resolution asks staff to consult with the Brant Food Systems Coalition and other partners to study the feasibility and report back with the cost and benefit analysis, funding opportunities and implementation considerations. So for me, this work aligns naturally with the partnerships already strengthening food insecurity. So for me, this work aligns naturally with the partnerships already strengthening food insecurity in our community. And it's talking about practical innovative steps that help ensure everyone in Bradford has consistent, consistent access to fresh nutritious food. So I encourage court, council to support this resolution tonight so we can continue moving forward towards a resilient and equitable local food system. Thank you.
Counsel Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to staff. When you're preparing this report, something to consider is locating this at the landfill site to take advantage of free heat from the landfill gas generation facility. Greenhouses have obviously, for, for obvious reasons, have a lot of glass, which is a tremendous heat loss. By utilizing free heat, it saves a huge expense that would otherwise cause hardship for this, this project. So it's, it's something that needs to be considered. And we can also utilize the, the water from the wastewater treatment plant, tapping into some of that before it goes back out to the river instead of using the potable water from the city's system. So some, a couple of things that will help reduce costs and, and make this project hopefully more viable. Thank you.
Any other speakers? Counsel Carpenter.
I wasn't going to speak to, but Counsel Martin tweaked my mind to think about the, when you're doing this, I think that's a great idea. Move it to landfill area possibly and use the, the heat from the landfill. And I think we should be looking at doing the same thing with our flowers and program we have with the Park and Rec and moving and utilizing that landfill heat source as well for saving us money in the long run. So I support that.
Counsel Van Tilburg.
You're doing an excellent job, Counsel Sullivan. You know, a, a lot of things were mentioned by Counsel Samwell regarding food security issues. But a couple have been overlooked that I don't think people naturally consider. Two events have disrupted our supply chains in, in the last five years. One, COVID. And there are only, there are limited suppliers in our food chain. And we found that out very, very quickly, how fast a grocery store can be emptied and how people will, will run out there and try and get as much as they can and in the midst of a supply chain break. The other thing is that in the wintertime, that can be far more difficult if there's no local farms with their fresh produce from the summer. And this covers year round. So you're looking at, you know, we just had a pandemic and COVID, we went through that. And now we're seeing in the international stage, a little, the breakdown of what were all free trade supply chains across the world. And that breakdown has disrupted a lot of those chains. And we don't know yet if there's more disruption in the supply chain to come, if there's other destabilizations, be it war, be it a drought and something, we, we don't know. So at any time, not just some of the people we think might be limited in their food supplies. We could all find ourselves a little short finding food and watching prices spike. So this is a, 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 a great in, in initiative to look at different ways to have a secure supply chain.
Not seeing any other speakers. I just wanted to thank Counselor Samwell for bringing this forward. Call the vote.
Item eight point four, carried unanimously on a recorded vote of ten to zero. All those voting in favor are Mayor Davis, Counselors Sullivan, Caputo, Les, Martin, McCurry, Carpenter, Hunt, Samwell and Van Tilburg.
We have two notices of motion on tonight's agenda. Counselor Samwell, would you read the title of both your notices of motion?
Call for bail, a call for reform and publication of the Ontario Sex Offender Registry and procedural changes to the municipal code, chapter twenty-six. Thank you.
Thank you. Please note that the notice of motion deadline for council agenda is this Thursday, November twentieth at nine AM.